This is Matthew Harris, the leadest in our prayer and recitation.
Good morning, Father. Thank you for this day. Thank you for the past week. Thank you for all the blessings, the safety, the safe travels. We're blessed as we're in this meeting of Catoosa County. Bless the citizens and the citizens of America.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the name of this law, the liberty of the people, and justice for all.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Tyler?
Here.
Chairman Hader?
Here.
Mr. Merrick?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
This time do we have your items to add or remove to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as is?
Remove.
Say.
All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
It is aye. This time if y'all have any chance to look up at the minutes because the January 21st meeting, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Say.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
We're moving into our appearances. That everybody that wanted to speak, sign in with their hand. Raise your hands where you can help me.
Everybody.
Mr. Sims?
I'm Anthony Sims. I'll keep you up for a minute. I'd just like to say how disappointed I am with the four commissioners who voted yes on the resolution last meeting. First of all, it's only been five months and we were told six as a trial time. Second, I cannot believe that even back in August when this was brought up, residents, Catoosa County voters said no back then. They were ignored. Again, five months ago, after being a petition with over 200 signatures and nine people stood at this podium and said no, four of you showing disregard for what the voters have had to say still voted to accept this. I hope the four of you are fully aware of exactly what you have shown the voters of Catoosa County. You basically said, "The very same people who put you in those seats do not matter as long as you four agree. We, the voters, don't count." I would like to point out that I do agree with the profane language. Nobody wants to hear that. See, I want to say thank you for voting the way the people who matter, the residents of Catoosa County, Mormons, and Mr. Charlie Stevens, truly has the best part for the county, the residents. And for that, we thank you. I've lived in this county here. I've lived in this county for most of my life and I was born and raised here. I've spoken with each of you on several occasions. Always try to be respectful when speaking to anyone. It's just the way I was raised. I left home or left from the last meeting feeling very disrespected by the four who chose to pass rules with no regard to the voters. I would also like to point out that it's an election year and three of us that voted are up for reelection. I am willing to say that the chairman has lost my vote. Also, the county is paying attention. The residents of the county are paying attention. I got lost, I'm sorry. All of your voters see that pushing the agenda takes priority over anything that the county voters say. I love this community. I chose to raise my family here. I want my kids to see the same things that I seen as a child. Small town life, going to school with the same people from grade school all the way up to graduation. Catoosa County has always made me feel safe and I want my children to feel that as well, which is why I had them with me at the last meeting. Instead, I felt betrayed by the elected commissioners because they voted against the voters. I oppose by saying I'm very disappointed in the vote that was taken and the true disregard to accept the voter input and what the people want. Remember, we the people who, we are the people who employ you because we as the voters will remember your actions and the outcome of actions. I would like to ask two questions. I know it's not a question and answer session that we'd like to ask. I'd like to ask, what prompted this type of resolution? Has there been enough situat- or been any situations or issues that justified this type of resolution? Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Mr. Ware?
Hey, good evening, commissioners. Where is this county? Just echoing the sentence here that the gentleman before me said. With that, I want to just touch on some of this. The home rules for counties and municipalities. That's in our Georgia Constitution. Sorry, I'm still trying to remember that I need to speak up. Article nine, counties and municipal corporations, section two, home rule for counties and municipalities, paragraph one. Such local acts may be amended or repealed by a resolution or ordinance duly adopted at two regular consecutive meetings of the county government authority not less than seven, for more than sixty days apart. A notice containing a synopsis of the proposed amendment or repeal shall be published in the official county ordinance once a week for three weeks within a period of sixty days immediately preceding its final adoption. Such notice shall state that a copy of the proposed amendment or repeal is on file in the office of the clerk in superior court of the county for the purposes of examination and inspection by the public. The clerk and superior court shall harness anyone upon written request to copy that proposed amendment or repeal. No amendment hereunder shall be valid if inconsistent with any provisions of this Constitution or if provisions have been made therefore by general law. The way I see it, your life of your resolution amendment is not valid. First resolution back on August 20th, it was told to us that it would be six months for review. And you brought this back up, January 21st meeting, to be voted on, and that's five months, Mr. Chairman. Those six. In those five months, Mr. Chairman, did you send out a notice to the people of the county of this change, like our Georgia Constitution states in article nine? In those five months, did you have two consecutive meetings, back to back, to discuss, that were seven to sixty days apart? I question the validity of this since you, Mr. Chairman, have conceded it. I understand that this was sparked from actual events, the people that stood up against the tea sploes, and how this should be used as a point of control, dialogue, as a conversation, and someone caught you out and won your peace. No amendment hereunder shall be valid if inconsistent with any provision of this Constitution or if provision has been made therefore by general law. Y'all know what general law is, right? It's the highest constitution. It's the law of the land. It's what governs our republic. The Georgia Constitution, however, kind of echoes the sentiments of that of our U.S. Constitution. And with that, Article one, Bill of Rights, section one of the Georgia Constitution states right of persons, paragraph one, life, liberty, and property. No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property except by due process law. Paragraph four, freedom of speech and other press guarantee. No laws shall be passed to curtail or restrain the freedom of speech where at the press, every person may speak, write, and publish sentiments on all subjects but shall be responsible for their future development. Can't curtail the press. As I respectfully acknowledge your resolution being valid in the county of Catoosa and I proclaim that it has no power or authority given the residents of the county of Catoosa County. Your agreement with this resolution was a vote paid for government, your services, and I will plan to hold you accountable for it in 2020. Thank you, guys.
Okay, George Patterson, B. Patty Road, District four. And I'm here to speak about the commission slip. We must fill out to speak like we're in high school. I guess the commission believes because they voted to hinder and impede our First Amendment right that we'd all go away and that would be the end of us. But they're sadly mistaken. Even though 200 voters signed a petition, nine citizens spoke against it, two of them candidates to replace two of you all. This item was brought to our attention last March 8th when something was leaked to us that this was being considered. It was denied by the chairman. When it was presented in August, by then it was, and I quote, "To make the commissioners better able to answer our questions." They have never answered our questions on any of them. The only answer by saying it is not a question and answer session. So it has nothing to do with giving us answers. Since the last meeting, Commissioner Henry mentioned twice that one of the mothers of the 4-H Club kids that attended the meeting complained to him. I was at that meeting. There was no profanity. There's never been any profanity. The only thing that got out of hand here is when the chairman has lost temper on several occasions. But in this particular case, this night, the kids from the 4-H Club were kind of giggly and whispering and talking. I really thought they'd be told to be quiet, but they weren't. So anyway, I'm not sure if I quite believe that what he is saying is true. That a mother complained. I'm sure these kids are in high school. They hear a lot worse in high school than they're going to hear in a spirited debate or a spirited disagreement. And Mr. Long on TUE, the day after the last meeting, said, when a caller called in and said, "Disappointed," he was, and how he thought Mr. Long and the commissioners that voted for this were going to help the Democrats. Mr. Long said to the caller, "It's a shame we have to do this, but we have regulars, which I'm happy to be called a regular because we don't just look at ourselves as regulars. We look at ourselves as like the oversight committee, watching everything you do, watching all the charges. We spend a lot of time and effort doing that to try and keep it a halfway honest county." But anyway, Mr. Long told this gentleman, "We hate to do it, we have to do it because we have regulars who make accusations and false accusations about citizens. So we had to do something." These accusations, what he calls accusations, are actually criticism. There's a difference between criticism and accusations. And they don't like, you all don't like criticism. Another thing, I live in Fort Worth in Ringo. I don't live in Fort Worth in Fort Oathor. And I'm not caring about what they do in Fort Oathor. You have to give a two weeks' notice. I couldn't care less about Fort Oathor. I don't live there. To me, Fort Oathor has always been like a den of iniquity, well-known for corruption. And I really don't care about Fort Oathor or the school board. I care about this meeting. So please don't keep reminding us of that. And I too would like to say how lucky we are to have one commissioner who stands up for the people that voted for him and listens and that doesn't go with the way of being a sheep. We really appreciate you, Commissioner Stevens. Thank you.
Good evening. I have a written statement tonight that I'm going to read. That way I can keep it all plain and simple. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and each one of our commissioners. My name is Ray Blankenship. I'm the administrator of Catoosa County, Georgia's Second Amendment Sanctuary Group. I've been a resident and law-abiding citizen of Catoosa County for over a decade. I'm here to speak about a Second Amendment Sanctuary status for Catoosa County residents. This proposition to the Board of Commissioners and the Sheriff of Catoosa County, Georgia, through the offices of the Chairman, Stephen Henry, District one, Jeff Long, District two, Chuck Harris, District three, Jim Cover, District four, Charlie Stevens, County Manager, Alicia Enbourn, and the Catoosa County Sheriff, Harry Sisick. This is a petition slash proposition to make Catoosa County, Georgia, a Second Amendment Sanctuary in reference to resist any state or federal legislation that could further restrict constitutional rights of citizens listed under the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution. These possible infringements included but are not limited to universal gun background checks. This is person-to-person sales. This is also of gun shows, high-capacity magazine bans, assault weapon bans, and any other countermeasures to hinder or restrict constitutional rights of we the people of Catoosa County. While the county may not be able to provide complete immunity from laws intended to be resisted, under the Dillon Rule, the county can be granted the authority to decide the priority of enforcement. By refusing to enforce specific laws or appropriate funds for these enforcements, our county can severely limit the impact of laws passed by the state or federal government. There have been more than 320 counties, cities, and townships in over 19 states thus far and have declared themselves for Second Amendment Sanctuaries. It is our duty and responsibility as the people and legislators of power to implore that our rights, our forefathers granted, be protected and ask the Board of Commissioners to construct and vote on ordinance declaring the county's intentions for no further infringements of enforcement of said infringements of the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution listed above but not limited to in paragraph two, along with a sign letter from the Catoosa County Sheriff and everyone elected hereon endorsing this ordinance. And we have a proposed ordinance that we handed out to you and I already found. The Catoosa County Commission fully supports the Second Amendment of the Constitution of the United States and also fully supports the rights of the citizens to keep and bear arms under the Second Amendment and agrees that right shall not be infringed. As such, the Catoosa County Commission fully supports the Constitution of the State of Georgia and the Constitution of the United States. The Catoosa County Commission reaffirms the Georgia Legislature's firm support of the Second Amendment and the right we the people of Catoosa County to keep and bear arms. Further, any statute adopted by Congress or the state legislature that violates the Constitution of the United States or their rights granted in the Second Amendment shall have no force or effect on the citizens of Catoosa County. The Catoosa County Commission pledges to continue to allocate funds to the Catoosa County Sheriff's Office to continue to protect the constitutional rights of the citizens of Catoosa County. Further, the county, or the Catoosa County Commission pledges not to allocate any funds that could be used to violate the constitutional rights of any of our citizens, including but not limited to a violation of the Second Amendment rights or of our citizens to keep and bear arms. In my closing statement, I would like to read the Second Amendment. It says, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state. The right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." I'm going to put a little skin in the game on this. If you pass this ordinance and it is tested, I will stand with you. I will stand with my sheriff to protect what you have signed and taken care of. That is my promise to you.
Ms. Williams?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Phyllis Williams. First of all, I want to say I'm not very photographic from the front, but I'm pretty sure my area does not affect most of the city. I don't want that thought. Actually, there's a organ that we paid for in the lower that y'all could use. But I got a news tip for Mr. Blankenship. If you don't respect Amendment number one, you're sure not going to respect number two. But that's why I'm here. On the agenda tonight, an executive session is land acquisition. And this is a question, and I know it's not answering service. However, I have a problem. A couple of years ago, we bought 49 acres of 41, and the public did not know that the economic development had 1.750, that 1 million 750,000 dollars on a piece of property. And my question is, when you put land acquisition on here, now I know it goes behind closed doors. I'm not ignorant. I've been here for 30 years. I want to know if you're going to let the public know or is it going to be like a little hidden fact with the economic development? We're just curious about spending money on property. Thank you very much.
Y'all gonna have to give a smaller mic or a bigger mic for me. I'm Charisse Miller. I live in the county. I want to start out by saying that I have nothing personal against any of you. I've told you this before. I'm just really disappointed by how you have structured our county government. Spending is out of control and wanting us to vote for extra taxes. Building and construction is out of control, making it more difficult for wild animals to exist by destroying forest land and destroying their habitats and making it difficult for the public to speak, just to name a few. You know, I try to find good in everyone and I do not forgive the kindnesses that others have done for me, my family, and my friends. However, I would like to see our county commissioners and county manager come together and work for us. For example, being available with unlimited time to speak with us about issues in this county. I know there are some of us that you don't like because of our speaking out about issues, but what we say is the truth and we would like to hear the same from you. Many have come before you asking you to vote against certain issues, for example, the public speaking issue, the tea sploes issue, and combining the Fort Oath and county fire departments. It seems that you vote the way you want to vote, which is usually against your constituents. There are three of you up for reelection this year. Whoever is elected, I hope more attention will be paid to the wishes of the voters. Remember the tea sploes. Catoosa County voters spoke loud and clear. And I would like to add that I'm praying for each one of you. Thank you.
First I want to add, Mr. Ray, you play two roles. You're only getting one check.
My name is Ray Barbie and I work at the seniors' center and present performance and I have been reporting tonight to request approval of a memorandum of understanding with Therapy Dogs International. Therapy Dogs International is a nonprofit organization which provides presentations free and charged through its tested and registered handlers whenever therapy dogs needed. We request the VOC approve this in memory of the opening with Therapy Dogs International in order to allow the seniors, visiting the seniors' center, the opportunity to interact with these therapy dogs.
Do I have a motion to approve? Say. Do y'all have any questions? I want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you. We do have several that I think we should be sitting home and have therapy dogs with, right?
Do y'all have any questions? How long have y'all been doing this program?
This is ready.
We missed that. That's what we're doing, y'all.
Yeah, because we do have several that'll just come in because they don't want to sit at home all the time. And then these are beneficial for them to get more.
Y'all have any questions? The, uh, those Therapy Dogs International, they carry the insurance different than?
They do. They require that the handlers have to have insurance. They actually clean it all really well before it's in. Then they, as well as when it leaves, they're responsible for everything. You just have to keep watch on them, just make sure that they all have one of those.
These are trained?
They are and they will have their thoughts and you'll get them now with the therapy dog, not just the dog.
All in favor of approving the ad?
Aye.
Thank you for doing that, too.
You're welcome.
Caitlin?
Good evening. I'm Caitlin. I'm the recreation director. I'm here to seek approval for a contract, to enter into a contract with an architectural firm, Carlson Carlson Architects, for the Parker Springs Ball Field concession restroom building. It'll be for design and construction services. The funding will be from the 2004 plus.
Do I have a motion? Remove. Say. At first place, 2004 plus. Any of this program, any of these plans, they gonna have to have with farts or the handicapped?
That's what they, we mentioned to them that we need as you go into the park, you know, you're down the slope and you've got a very small area and that's going to sit in.
I've seen that. I've seen that personally. I've had a face, you know, a senior or handicapped person there to come in there. Got her in this wheelchair over in there one time over there.
There's only so far you can go, but.
I feel like it's really good thing, keep a liability. But I would love to stand in the pair of that.
And that's the goal for this, to go up to standard and have great games and everybody come out and to watch a little more sport.
Caitlin, can you explain why this is needed?
Yeah, so right now, a lot of our facilities are not up to par where they should be in order to make it accessible to everybody. And so by doing this, it will be able, it make it easier for us to schedule more games over Parker Springs. It's more of a central area for a lot of our participants. So we'll make it more accessible. We'll have a little bit more going on over in that area, might give us some.
This is needed?
Yes.
All in favor of the ad?
Aye.
All of those?
This will be easy because no money is involved. I'm asking for your approval to not have an agreement between Catoosa County and the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission for their assistance with the preparation of the county's comprehensive plan update for 2021 through 2025. There's no additional charge for the service. It's covered by annual dues that we pay to Northwest Georgia Regional Commission. Our comp plan is a 20-year plan which guides the county's long-term planning activities and we're required to update that plan every five years.
Do I have a motion to approve? Remove. Say. Any questions? All in favor of approving that?
Aye.
Thank you.
You are appointing a advisory board. Do we know the people that'll be on the board? Yeah. For the recreation?
Caitlin?
Yeah?
Did you send the letters? You took the list. Should have. Do you not have the letters? Okay. Do you have it, honey? Do you happen to have it, Caitlin?
I, yes. I can get it.
I guess we could post that over.
We can.
We are forming an advisory committee for our Recreation Association. Since we're not going to have association, we have a member from each board, since it's going to be all of our Recreation Board.
Yes.
We will post people that have been chosen for that, because those meetings are on. And you'll need, she can get that list, you'll wait.
Read names out.
You want us to get that one in the meeting?
Yeah, we can do that now.
Can we revisit that? On the slide? How about that one?
I didn't sound like that. I sounded like none, I need to set it straight. You want Caitlin to get over and bring it up?
Yeah, he's kind of a thought of his own. All right, I'm just taking a paper at a time, I guess.
So on our advisory committee, we have three from the Boynton Recreation, three representatives from Ringo's Sports Association, and three from Lakeport Fork Association. The three from Boynton, it's, it is.
How was I supposed to know?
I know, I, Jim Rice, we have Travis Caldwell and Zach Davis, and then for Ringo's Association, Cassie Tweedy, Jay Runyon, and Scott Ward, and then Fort Oathor, Robert Keane, Dexter Shuckins, and we have one more position, one more spot we need to fill.
Do you look for one more?
For one more for Lakeport Fort.
That's sufficient.
I think so. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, is the proposed termination of lease agreement between the county and Fort Recreation Association. This is also kind of the last part of housekeeping that we need to do in the consolidation of the plan between the county and Recreation Department and our Rec Associations. Presently, there's a lease out there from 2012 for Boynton facilities, where the Boynton Rec Association would provide the programs, the county owns the facilities, maintains them, but the Rec Association has certain duties regarding those programs. Under the new organization that's going to take place in the county for recreation, that won't be the case anymore. The Boynton one does not provide the programs that are in this lease, and so we need to formally terminate it. And that's what's important now, just to propose motion to terminate this lease agreement and give the Florida.
Do I have a motion to terminate this? Two. Second.
And I'll say this has been discussed, it's not a good association, it's not like a springy thing.
I'll make favor of the proof, say aye. Aye. Mr. Roberts?
Chairman, Commissioners, two reports for you guys. First of all, financial report for the three months ended December. So after three months, we were staying on target budget, we'd be at 25 percent, and we had the new on revenue front, the revenues for the first three months ending December 2019, $7,682,986, which is 26.91 percent of budget, and that exceeded the budget in revenue by $544,060. On the expenditure side, for the first 30 months, the total expenditure is $6,544,296, and that's at 23.9 percent of budget, so the expenditure should be less than 25 that they are. And that's also less than budget expenditure by $281,268. Once we deduct out the operating transfers from Fire and 911, revenue so far has exceeded expenditure by $949,232 for actual local budget, and it also has exceeded prior year In the report on the revenue side, it's been four months into January, and our loss receipts for the fourth month of this fiscal year, $753,836, and that exceeds budget by $90,169, or 13.59 percent. Total loss received so far this fiscal year, $2,792,733, and that's $138,660 over budget, within the budget. Turning to SWS, we're now through the sixth month of our 2019 SWS cycle, and to date, this SWS proceeds $5,909,74, that's 98.48 percent of the budget, our standard budget for the month. The actual collections for January, $1,075,603, so we're actually over the standard $1 million. In general, January does tend to be a higher month because that's actually the collections from December, we have a ten-month arrears, but still that exceeded the same period prior year by $60,409.
Oh, and first of all, I just want to clarify, we were $281,268 less of our budget when we spent the last $1,000 expected to.
Correct. Year today, we're under budget for expenditures and over budget for revenue.
Just a disclaimer. Thank you. Happy birthday.
Oh. Happy birthday. You got a birthday.
Birthday.
Because they ain't a photograph.
No, I'm regular, please.
Yeah.
What's the last I have? Commissioner Tom, still want to do anything? I would like to say, I appreciate everybody coming out, the Blankenship, I appreciate your comments, I know you've already spoken with the sheriff, actually, the United States draft, I appreciate your communication, and you did something, I do also want to point out, wonder what some people think, the office that we take says, "We support the Constitution of the United States." We take this seriously. And thank you for having that, I appreciate you very much.
I'd like to say thank you for coming out, and I, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to serve you as commissioner. And I want to point out one thing that I'm really impressed with in this county, and we got some good department heads. I want to thank Caitlin for the hard work she's done to organize this with the associations. I mean, it's something we need, we've needed this for a long time, and, you know, I've been a coach, I've done everything for my kids, the sports over here in Coteau's County, and all the, you know, all the Recreation Association, but, you know, it's something we got to do, those taxpayer's dollars go to these entities, and, you know, and I think it's a good thing, and I think it'd be a thing that we can show you where the money's going to be, you know, instead of like years past, we've not known where the money is. So I'm grateful to have the opportunity to try to make a difference in our kids and our communities, and I thank you and your staff for, you know, making things happen. And I want to thank all the commissioners for supporting and getting it done. I just want to thank everybody for coming. Well, you know, you put a microphone in front of a politician and start resisting. But anyway, thank you, thanks everybody for coming, we appreciate your comments, and God bless you and God bless your United States, remember. I just want to say, you know, thank you everybody for coming out, thank you for your passion. Oftentimes, it sounds like we're on two sides of the issue, but I promise we're not. You might see it one way, and we're all here for the same reason, we're all here for every citizen of Coteau's County. The other thing I'd like to say, I appreciate every employee and every department head of this county. It just came out that Coteau's County has the lowest mileage rate of any county in our songs. And I think our people are providing excellent service with the lowest tax mileage rate of any county. We're the fifth lowest in the state, but the four ahead of us, if you add all their populations together, it's still not our population. So the county's our size, we're the number one. And I'm really proud of that. And, you know, that comes from people doing their job, doing the homework first. I know we've got more that we can do, and the more we talk about doing, a lot of change is coming. But I'm just, I'm just proud, I'm proud of people in Coteau's County.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, we appreciate your appreciation. All right, at this time, we are going into detective session for personnel review. Ready for count room?
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. So blue. Second. I'll make favor of the guy to adjourn. Say aye. We are adjourned. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. I'll make favor of the guy to adjourn. Aye.